The town council. And when we're going to have a public hearing on the ordinance of O dash twenty-two dash four, which is an ordinance of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the adoption of the town of Chesapeake Beach Comprehensive Plan for Land Use Uses. Let the record read that the entire council was present at this time. We'll, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one another, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so as I said, we'll begin the public hearing, just a couple of, of points. We're going to take testimony from those who are present first. So that could give you the option of, you know, leaving when you're done your testimony and then we'll, if there's any virtual testimony, we'll take that. So we do have a list for those to, to sign up. If you haven't, if you haven't, you know, please do. And I'll, I'll let the town administrator read off everybody's name and your, and your personal residence. So having said that.
We have Diana Sofa, two oh six seven Timberneck Drive, Owings, Maryland.
Welcome.
I just wanted to say, I recently read the comprehensive plan online and I wanted to start by commending you all for what is clearly an incredibly thoughtful and well-considered document. It struck, the very first thing that struck me was how much it considered the needs of the residents in the community, which was so heartening because it's, it's a very special thing in, in this day and age that our needs are really put first and so many components to it. I could see that just shining through. So thank you all very much for that. I particularly wanted to come today to speak as a resident in the community and as a physician and a local business owner to, to lend my support to the thirty-five foot height ordinance for the buildings. I, I know especially on social media, there's been a lot of discussion of it. And I wanted to say that I thought it was a very important thing that I was very pleased to see included because I think it's going to be essential to maintaining the lovely feel we have in this community. It's a very special thing, very unique. Having lived in big cities, medium cities, small, everything, I, I can just say this place is special. And that is a very necessary part of keeping it special. Limiting the congestion, limiting the damage to the infrastructure. Truly, traffic jams cause mental health issues for I can't tell you how many of my patients. And this is one of those rare gems of a place that really hasn't stretched beyond its capacity. And I think keeping the buildings short is a big part of that. Not to mention just keeping the place a beautiful place where we still have access to our natural beauty. We can still have views. I know there's been a lot of discontent with how enormous that parking garage by Rodden Real is and how many people really find it an eyesore and damaging to the spirit of the place. So we want to make sure that that doesn't happen more. We want to keep this place small and beautiful. And, and I think that, that height limitation is going to be important for it. So once again, thank you all so much for the time and energy you've put into this plan. It truly, it makes me feel so hopeful and wonderful about the future of our, our local town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we go to the second person, I actually had meant to say something before I took public comment. And it's basically, I just want to publicly, once again, thank the planning and zoning board for the volunteer work that they did. It's, it's amazing the amount, the hundreds of hours that they spent in developing a product and the, and you know, and they showed their professionalism as well as their love for the town. So I, I once again want to publicly applaud that group and everybody else associated with that team. So having said that, number two.
Yes, we have Laura Blackwelder, three, two, five, six Cannon Cade Court, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland.
Hello. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am serving on the Planning and Zoning Committee, but I am here today in the capacity as a concerned citizen. And so I just want to point out a few things that concern me along the way. First, zero development rights exist on the two hundred acre parcel behind Richfield Station aligning Fishing Creek. And this information was nearly lost in our planning process. The parcel is protected from development in perpetuity by protective bids habitat covenant that can only be lifted by the mayor. The covenant requires that the parcel be turned over to either Richfield Station or to the town of Chesapeake Beach as a condition for approval of phased development of Richfield Station. And the owner of the property is required to relinquish the parcel now. I cannot stress enough how important it is to retain the information of this covenant on the official land use map and to retain the information located in two ninety dash seventeen F of the critical area overlay district and two ninety dash eighteen growth allocation floating districts. Second, as you are all aware, the comprehensive plan before you indicates that high density multi-unit housing projects would still be allowed to be built where older single-family residents currently exist. Additionally, language in the housing chapter suggests that it is the objective of the town to receive intensity in the form of low-income housing projects. The Planning Commission has worked exhaustively in an effort to remove language and recommendations introduced and advocated for by the town planner that will result in high-density zoning capacity in residential neighborhoods. On many occasions, the Planning Commission has removed or amended recommendations only to see them reintroduced several meetings later. Or to see items simply inserted, omitted, or not addressed. Due to vacancies on the Planning Commission, removing these recommendations from the plan has required a unanimous consensus by voting commissioners, which was not easily achieved. The Planning Commission has added many meetings and has canceled none. It is only fair to request that the town council add additional work sessions if necessary to act on the plan and to ensure that their campaign promise of protecting small-town charm is realized. All council members should be afforded the opportunity and should take the responsibility to make and vote on motions to impact the plan. I have pointed out in my letters to you, language in the housing chapter and in the implementation chapter that could benefit from your review. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Paul Lucas, thirty-eight oh two thirteenth street, Chesapeake Beach.
Welcome, Paul. You'll have to excuse me. I've been garbage at publicly speaking since I was twelve years old. But aside from that, I'm going to give one of the old compliment sandwiches here. I was looking over the plan and I was happy to see how much focus there is on local walkability sidewalks, bike paths, you know, electric charging stations, things of that nature going in. I think that stuff's all helpful for everybody going forward. Especially keeping, again, that, that charm of the town, being able to come here, park your car and walk around for the day. Been to Harpers Ferry, it's the same kind of deal. I think that's a good aesthetic for the town. I was curious, I saw some plans for water mitigation and public sewage expansion. I noticed we had about twelve hundred and fifteen, or I'm sorry, twelve, yeah, twelve hundred and fifteen available volume households, if I remember reading that right. And I was wondering if you guys had any, any method of, of determining who is more prominent for that, like low-line areas, people, I know my house last year when it rained for two weeks straight, water table hit five feet below my property. So, you know. Yeah, so I was, you know, really, I'm just curious if I can get on public sewage soon. For, for one of the reasons mentioned, having the old septic tanks from the old split levels that were built in seventies and eighties becoming kind of a problem. A lot of those tanks are aging out. A lot of them haven't been replaced. They're all old steel tanks and it's a thirty thousand dollar job. But it's ten thousand dollars to hook up sewage and it's safer and, and it's better for the environment, keeps. And it's one less thing the town has to drive around checking on. So just thought I'd throw that out there. I did have some concerns. I saw a lot of notice, I saw a lot of the use of the word cottage. I'm assuming that just refers to the old villages here that have been here since, God, early nineteen hundreds. But I wanted to make sure more than anything else that someone wasn't going to come by my house and tell me what color I can paint it. Or things of that nature. I pay my property taxes. It's my property and I hate to be that guy in the room, but I'm about to be that guy in the room. I don't think you should be able to tell me what I can do with it. And the other concern I had that I noticed was that there seems to be kind of a stoppage in growth. I don't know if that's planned or whether that's just how things have been lately. But also noticed some zoning changes, the maritime district changes to strictly commercial now. Did I see that right? Or? I'm not sure. But I was a little concerned about that. It seems like capping the size of the buildings you can put on a property, especially with sea level rise and water coming up. You know, I think starting, you know, a lot of those old houses have, or some of the older houses, newer ones they're building, I'm sorry, of the garage on the first floor and then living space above that. And, you know, helping, helping mitigate some of that upcoming water sea level rises, you know, important. And I was curious if, if the change in some of these, the change in some of this wording kind of restricts what, what we can do with certain properties and again, I'm going to be that guy in the room and say, if you pay your taxes, you should be allowed to do anything within reason, you know, as long as you're not building something to blow the moon out of the sky or something strange like that. But again, you know, most of the plan looked really good. I like that we're preserving green areas. I like that we're working on things like that, keeping the town walkable and, and, you know, pretty to visit. Tourism's gone up here a lot since I was a kid. I've been here since, you know, since I was two years old. So it's a nice town. I didn't ever really want to leave it. So I came back when I had my kids. It's a place I want to raise my kids, especially with that brand-new elementary school they're building. But that's, that's really it. Those are my concerns. That's, that's my time to address and hopefully we don't move to do anything too drastic that's going to slow growth or, you know, or in the opposite direction, take this from being a nice place to come visit into I don't know, sprawling tower of the big pink palace. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
We have Wes Donovan, two, three, three, five Golf Club Drive, Dunkirk, Maryland.
Wes Donovan from Dunkirk, Maryland, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So I submitted a written testimony and I brought some to pass out as well, which I'll be more than happy to hand out after I speak. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate the, I really appreciate being in person with everyone and getting to see, see everyone face to face. I'm, I love history. I love the history of Chesapeake Beach. And one of the reasons why I love history is we all get to learn something from history. History teaches us lessons on how to treat one another. History teaches us about mistakes made so they don't get repeated. And then sometimes you have to look back in order to look ahead. When we look back on this part of the town's history, I consider this to be a watershed moment where a shift will occur. In ten or twenty years, residents will be asking the future elected officials, how can we get the town to prosper again? They'll be saying things like our zoning laws are too restrictive. We've only had fifty houses built in the last decade or two. And we haven't had any new businesses come to town or create any new jobs. Many businesses will be closing because of the lack of growth or increased competition in the neighboring town or county. Many of the houses will be thirty years old or older and will be in need of repairs or, or worse yet, be rebuilt. They need to be rebuilt. Homeowners won't be able to rebuild because the, the structure will be considered a non-conforming use. All we will have left in town is either cottages that are rundown, that need to be rebuilt, or single-family homes. This plan removes all of the potential of having multifamily housing like apartments where senior living in the center of town. We have a strong demand right now for apartments for newly graduated Collins students who have school debt to pay off or empty nesters who have no desire to cut the grass anymore. This demand isn't going to go away either. With this comprehensive plan, that demand will only be increased. When a community has little diversity of housing types, those communities end up having a high turnover of existing residents as people age. The number of foreclosures increase and communities are less stable during the housing market downturn. I Googled all of this and I found a website that I think it'd be worth your while to read, to go to and check out. It's housingmatters.org. This comprehensive plan unfortunately affects more than just us and our properties. And that's very unfortunate. This plan will have far more negative impacts than what the commission seems to think. Or they just don't care what the impacts will be because of the desire to have no growth. The young lady who first spoke, she, she touched on one thing that that I thought was pretty interesting and, you know, one of my favorite interactions I've had lately is people saying that with the pink palace and the parking garage, we're going to lose that small-town charm. So the other day I was in, in the restaurant and someone said, man, I'm new to Chesapeake Beach. What's there to do around here? And we just got to talking and I said, so how long have you actually lived here? And they said, well, I, I just moved here last year. And I said, last year, really? And I said, what made you choose Chesapeake Beach? They said, I love the small-town charm. And I'm thinking to myself, well, that's funny because we opened the parking garage two years ago. So every time, you know, someone talks about small-town charm, the reality is this, it's people in this room that make up small-town charm. It's people on the Zoom that make up small-town charm. The size of buildings don't matter. We've had the pink palace there or Horizons for almost two decades, I think. And we still have small-town charm. So with that, I'm going to pass out the sheet I did before and thank you for your time.
If you don't mind, sir, if you give them to me, I'll. Thank you. Never enough, right? Super great. Thank you, sir. Thank you for testimony.
We have Eric Blitz, nine Lantern Circle, Parkton, Maryland.
Welcome, Eric. Good evening, Mayor Mahoney, councilmembers. Good to see you. I'm just going to try to set up my phone so I can see a little better. I'm not sure exactly how I'm going to do that, but I represent the Rodden Real, which is the owner of the Marina property and owns most of the properties in the Maritime Commercial District with the exception of the water park and the Chesapeake, I mean, the community center. The proposed comprehensive plan is not a good plan for Chesapeake Beach. It seeks to shut the gates to new residents, capping your zone capacity at fifty-three percent. The plan reduces the opportunities for residential growth so low that the rate of growth in the past decade, which was five point four percent, twenty-five percent of, of the lowest decade you had had since nineteen sixties. This plan calls for that rate of growth to be cut in half. That wastes the upgraded capacity of, of your water and sewer system and the last water tower, which were designed to accommodate the full buildout of the town, including the Marina properties. By eliminating the proposed Harbor Vista West project, the water and sewer line that the town built under the sewer, under the easement that the town, that the Donovan's gave for, to the town for free will lead to nowhere and do nothing. It's a pipe to nowhere. These outcomes are all going to be a huge waste of taxpayer dollars. The nation and the state of Maryland are in the midst of a housing crisis. And with the severe lack of affordable and workforce housing and despite a very clear mandate of Maryland law that required the comprehensive plan to address those, to increase such opportunities, this plan limits most meaningful development and certainly the ones that are the best for smart growth. It's pretty much the archetype of exclusionary housing. This decrease, this will decrease your tax base, limit economic development for businesses that require an expanding residential market and ultimately reduces the town's capacity to deliver services for the same tax rate. This plan goes out of its way to penalize the owners of the Marina, taking a property which has been designated, the designated location for the highest intense development for residences both in height and density and removes all opportunities for any residential growth. These plans have been in the works for decades. The whole area has always been the area designated by your comprehensive plan for the most intense residential development. This plan does a complete one eighty. It renders the significant resources expended by the owners to achieve critical area mitigation for the previously approved developments completely wasted. But it goes further. The regulations proposed for the Marina property make viable development of commercial uses completely impracticable. Residents and property owners have a right to expect basic consistency in their treatment under planning. In one of the key, I'm sorry, and one of the key purposes of comprehensive planning is to give that kind of guidance. Turning to a broader perspective, if you want a walkable community, placing your residences in immediate adjacency to a totlot, the head end for the walkway, the community center, walking distance to the shopping center and the town hall, the water park, community center, totlot, ball fields, these are all the kind of community facilities that are supposed to be immediately adjacent to your residences as a way of increasing a walkable community. And it's also kind of the archetype of smart growth, place the density where the infrastructure is. If you want to improve environmental outcomes, the only way you get to that by decreasing stormwater management is new development. Having properties live fallow or in, in sub standard condition is not going to change the stormwater. You only get that when you get a development and those developments tend to be the ones that do the best job at stormwater management. Furthermore, apartments, things like that have the lowest impact to the environment on a per-unit basis. Single-family homes have a yard that is chemically treated often, mowed. That's a substandard environmental outcome. Having all your units compressed increases your environmental outcomes. Thirty-five foot height limit is going to create a lot of houses that are, because of the way you're, they've also changed the measurement, they're going to be a non-conforming uses. And that has a consequence because a, a non-conforming use cannot have its be intensified or expanded. So you're going to have a lot of people coming to the town with otherwise reasonable requests for modifications to their house. And the, the boarding, the zoning process goes to say, no, you're a non-conforming use. You can't expand or intensify your use.
Fair time.
If you will. Thank you. Thank you.
I would urge that, if I could close with one sentence. I would urge that the council carefully look over the plan and reject the plan, send it back to the commission with your recommendations of the kind of things you want to change. But this is not the plan for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Jeff Foltz, forty, twenty, twenty-eighth street, Chesapeake Beach.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Like others have said, I appreciate all the hard work planning and zoning has done. I, I lived it. I also have submitted, you know, if, if you go back and look, you know, I had written comments back in November when they were, when we had open or public hearings for them. And there's, there's a lot of good work in the comprehensive plan. So as I talk about things tonight, it's not necessarily to throw air, throw stones or do anything, but I'm going to highlight a couple of areas because there are a lot of good plans, but I, I think I'd like to share some thoughts in an effort to maybe make it better in some areas I could use some additional attention, I think. And one of the things that's where I, I've struggled is some allegations about traffic. And I'm going to highlight two pages in the plan. One is page fifteen where it's notes routes two sixty and two sixty-one require traffic solutions. But, but I've yet to see any studies or reports that indicate that what that, you know, what that need is. But that's in, it's in the report and it alleges that we need a solution. I'm not sure what the problem is yet for two sixty and two sixty-one. I remember back in years past, you know, I've been in the town since two thousand and one when that intersect, when mirrors and two sixty-one operated at degraded and failing status, you know, that, a lot of that was fixed when the bridge work was done. And, you know, and there was a lot of good work that went into that. But I still feel like we're searching for a problem that doesn't exist with regards to two sixty and two sixty-one. On page ninety, we also talk about a significant expansion of the Rodden Real is currently underway and the effect that it will have on the capacity constraints along Bayside Road is not yet known. However, we, there were traffic studies and models that were done forecasting all of that growth in those models and those models never indicated a, it never, it was always operating in A or B condition. And so there were, again, there's allegations that we don't know yet, but I think we've done the state that, you know, there's modeling that's been done, there's studies that have been done that show we're not there. Not to be cautious moving forward and not get in that situation, but I, the report seems to paint the image that it needs something done and done now. I also, if you know, if there's also a, I don't know the right page, it might be along that same page. Between two thousand and two thousand and twenty, a twenty-year period where we had substantial growth, we, we doubled our home, the number of households between twenty twenty or between two thousand and twenty twenty, yet we only saw a net increase of eleven hundred daily trips by using Maryland S H A standards. You know, and that, it's about ten percent growth over those twenty years in daily trips, both on two sixty and two sixty-one heading south. But we, you know, we doubled the household. So I just caution us to be a little overly fearful of what our traffic increases might do, especially in areas where we might have modest growth and you know, I hear and I guess words scare me. I hear high density, I hear intensification. As I read the comprehensive plan, the only high-density areas are the ones that already exist, mainly the ones across the street, I'm drawing a blank. And Keith, back where you guys live, Chesapeake Station and Seagate, you know, so some of those townhouse developments were high-density. There's no other areas in the land use categories that are, that are proposed to be high-density. The residential village one and residential village two, which require five thou, I think it's a five thousand minimum, one dwelling per five thousand square feet. The high density was one dwelling per twenty-five hundred square feet. So when we say we're worried about high-density development, intense development, it's not even allowed in our residential, in R V one or R V two. So picture Seagate and cut that in half because that's, that's how intense of a development you might have in some, up in, you know, in the neighborhood district and everything. So and why do I mention that? Because you, the planning commission nailed it in the housing section, in the section of plan for housing and their objectives. The objectives were, were wonderful. It talked about affordable housing. It talked about housing types for all, all demographics, all age groups. And there's lots of ways to achieve that. Yet, when I listen to the planning and zoning discussions, everything is about single-family. And the only thing, the, the most recent discussion was the only thing that would be permitted unconditionally would be single-family homes in R V one and R V two is what the discussion was last Wednesday night. That's concerning me because I, I honestly believe you can do well.
Thank you.
With other houses. With other housing types that blend in with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good seeing you again. Thank you.
Eric, that's all that I have signed up for unless anyone here would like to give public comment.
Okay, we, you would, do we have anybody on the call?
Yes, there's multiple people on the call.
Okay. At this point in time, we're going to take public comment from those who are are calling in. Anyone do that, Holly?
Um we have Renee. Renee, could you state your uh name and address, please, for the record? And I believe you're on mute, Renee.
Renee Demler, 3915 14th Street, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland.
Thank you.
I've lived here, I've lived here five years and I, you know, I I'm part of the, I I joined the walkable community of meetings once in a while also, and I love the idea of walkable community. I love to be able to walk in this small town, but we are a beach town, you know? We talk about the, people talk about the nastrosity of the parking garage, but look at the history that's on there. The history shows that we used to be a town that had a steamship that came into town and dropped people off. We had a railroad that came through town. We had um amusement park. That used to be resort town. We are not that. We are a small beach town with beach housing. I have to run a house because I cannot find an apartment house to live in. I am a single, you know, I'm a empty nester. I would have loved to have an apartment building to live in, but now I have to run a house, mow gr- mow grass, which I don't want to do. I don't want to mow, mow grass and shovel snow. But this is supposed to be a beach town. Look at North Beach, they have houses with a um garages underneath. They have houses on stilts for the low, low areas. Why can't we do that here? Why is it only, we have to have it this way? I feel it's only that way because you want to jeopardize one business. And I'm, I feel sorry for that. This is a town that's supposed to care about the whole community, not just parts of it, especially for a business that provides so much income to the town. That's all I have to say.
Are there, is there any other public comment? We have Randy Getman. Um Randy, could you provide your address for the record, please?
3248 Ina Chase. I, I just had a couple of comments. I, I had uh listened to the briefing that, that uh Planning and Zoning had given to uh the Town Council in February, and I listened to that all last night. And and I agree with uh some of the comments that the councilman made. I'd just like to go over a couple of uh, just a couple of issues. Uh one is the uh the 35 foot. Um I, I, I believe what, I, I kind of uh go with several of the council people, and I wanted to make sure that when you, when you uh actually verbalize how that's going to be measured, and whether you're going to stop at 35 feet or maybe go to 40 feet or whatever, I, I wouldn't want you to take away the ability to put a garage underneath. Um how, you know, you're building, because of the sea rising, you know, you want, that there's, there's different ways to rebuild, and I, I, I wouldn't want to do limit the opportunity to do a, to do a good building that, that is going to sustain through, through sea rising, um simply because you want to keep this 35 foot. Uh and and I heard several to- town council people, I can't remember which ones, I think it was Greg uh was one of them that talked about this. Um also, the, the, the traffic issue, uh I do know every time I try to come out of Cox and head downtown at, at, at the wrong time of uh evening, that it's very difficult to make a right turn to come down to town. Also, it's very difficult, if you're in uh Sitco, to, to make a left turn, to come back up because there are so many cars coming in. But I also noticed that I, I think because of the light we put at Richfield Station, uh there, there's eventually a catch-up to, to where you will get a break. And, and so I don't know, I, if you want to talk about the new transportation, I do think it has to be studied. Uh I do see a lot of cars coming in. If you're trying to come to downtown between four and six, it's very difficult to do. Uh and if you're not going all the way to, to uh Rollins, that to turn around and come back on lights, it's very difficult to turn back to go home again. Um I guess the main thing that I should say is, is uh thank God for the planning and zoning. Uh those volunteers, you guys have done, guys and gals, have done a great job. And, and uh you, you really put your heart into it, you put a lot of hours into it. And, and uh there's some tweaking that has to be done and, and I, I, I think, uh, you know, our town council are, are uh very alert about looking into certain things. And let's be fair about this. Um but, but thanks for the great job you did. I also want to say that I, I don't know if you want to stabilize growth to, to, to as low as you've done it for the next 20 years. Uh I, I, I do think growth sh- should be kept back some, but I, I think you're just doing a little too much. Um that's all I have to say. And again, thanks Planning and Zoning, and thank Town Council for looking so hard at this.
Thank you, Randy.
We have Brian, Brian Brown. Could you state your address for the record, please?
Uh it is 7824 DeForest Drive, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. And means to the, the Planning and Zoning Committee is, has done a great job. I've read up on this. Uh but some of the things that I have asked, back then, um we want people to move down here, we want a better quality of our infrastructure, but there is multiple ways that you would have to increase taxes to be able to get it if we limit the amount of growth. And to having it setback just to single-family homes, you're doing more destruction to the environment, taking more trees down, taking more properties up. If you can have 20 people live in the footprint of one house or one to two houses, you're taking up a lot less environmental damage by having a domicile that will have 10 families living in it. I, as an apartment building, you're taking up less footed, less footage of the environment. Uh within, with the new apartment buildings, new construction, the, the environmental impact is less because of the higher standards that we can hold them to. And that's all I would like to say.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan, could you state your full name and address for the record, please?
Hello, Jonathan Evans, 3135 Cox Road.
Thank you.
Hey, um so as some of you know, I served on Planning and Zoning for a little over a year. I enjoyed working with everybody and um I know that we, we all had the citizens' best interest at heart, and I support the comprehensive plan. I'm sorry I wasn't able to see it through to the end, but I do support everything that they're doing, and I think there's a lot of good, a lot of great things in the, in the comprehensive plan. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other public comment?
Very none. I want to thank everybody. You, we, you have one more?
Yes, uh Colleen, could you state your full name and a- address, please?
I'm Colleen Anglin. I'm at 3617 27th Street. So I'm actually basically a lifetime resident of Chesapeake Beach. I'm, I'll be 32 this year, but I grew up in the high, in the Highlands, just over town line, so I've seen what this town has looked like since the early 90s. Um my biggest thing is I do want to support the 35-foot kind of building height, and there's other things in the comprehensive plan that I really liked. I actually wrote a paper analyzing it for a uh master's class a couple months ago. Um 35 feet, you can still have a garage, you can have a garage on the ground floor and you can still have two stories above. Some of that might be below grade, but depending on where you are, like, I'm very uphill, so the water table's conceivably a little bit lower in certain places, so it really just depends on where you are. I understand the push for multifamily housing, for apartments and things like that. Um my biggest concern would be traffic, just because I'm right, I turn off of 260 onto Judy Street to get to my house because I live between G and F, and there's times in rush hour where I have to wait to be able to make that left-hand turn, and it's practically the first turn you make when you come in town. So if I have to wait up there, I can't imagine what people several blocks down have to do. Um I've already seen what it looks like, 260 was shut down, I want to say it was last week or the week before for like maintenance, so everything was coming down my street. It gets crowded very easily with the traffic we already have, and I'm not anti-growth, but if you look around, we don't really have space to expand our roadways. We can't really make them wider, we can't really add lanes. Um so we're in a very unique community, we're surrounded by water, we have wetlands all over the place, we have steep slopes and other areas that are undevelopable all over the place. Um so we are kind of confined, and I know everybody throws out environmental stuff, that's what I studied as a master, so I don't want to see sprawl, I don't want to see us taking down existing stuff to widen roadways to make space for more people if we can't fit more people in the footprint, but that was basically it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff, did you want to make public comment? I saw your hand up. If so, if you could unmute yourself and just state your uh full name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Jeff Krailing. My address is 1970 Palo Alto Avenue, Lady Lake, Florida. Um I'd like to say that um that uh after watching the planning commission, I mean the planning uh meetings, um that it, it did appear that uh there was definitely some bias against the Donovan's projects. And also in that bias, my project on uh co- up on Cox Road, which is well above the sea level rise, was also uh moved to a rural, or planned to be moved to a rural uh uh conservation area. And uh I didn't get a chance to speak at the November meeting because I was uh in the hospital at that time, so uh this is my probably last opportunity, and I, I would like the council to uh consider, we're looking back at the, at the series of meetings starting uh from January of 2021 forward, um and uh seeing what was said specifically about the Donovan's property and my property uh by the zoning administrator as explaining my property. Uh and he claimed it would be a subdivision similar to the heritage and uh it has some steep slopes in it, and uh it would not be a, a something that the town would want to see happen, um which is interesting as, as to if he is a developer or if he uh can understand, the Heritage Pro- Project looks to be very, when I was up there last month, looked to be going very well and substantially good for the town and uh and substantially good for uh the taxes, I'm sure, as well. I'm asking you to review uh my property in specific, um the Cox Road property. That's uh all I have to say about, and I went through the planning commission meeting 10 years or so ago and uh had the property zoned for uh 50 possible townhouses if it would fit into there and uh have submitted a concept plan uh back in 2019, I believe it was. So it's just kind of taking of my land uh by changing the zoning to, down to basically uh nothing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is there any other public comment?
Okay, uh that concludes our public hearing. I'm going to thank everybody. Um do know that uh the, the Town Council has a work session on April the 12th. Uh amongst many items of business that night, we will discuss the comprehensive plan. Uh everybody's welcome to either attend in person or to view on the internet. Uh having said that, is there motion to adjourn? Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Good evening, everybody.